Mr. Denae, lead us in the pledge.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll observe a moment of silence.
Shevy, Breckus, Zadra, absent Delgado, George, Jarden, Kachal.
Here. All right, this time we'll go to public comment. Holly Powell.
Thank you for having me. My name is Holly Powell. I live off of Wells Avenue, which is a high graffiti area, as you all are aware, driving through town. I am also a building manager at Project Solution Community Complex, which is right down the street from my home. We try every day, we make it a daily mission, to remove the graffiti off the church building behind us, the school, which is Vaughn Elementary or Vaughn Middle School across the street from us, the city sidewalks, streets, signs, posts, flags, anything you can think of off the city, and our neighbors' fences. We do that with this bucket. This is our only bucket. We have a sponge, we have a cup for water, we have a rag, gloves, and a last can of graffiti remover, and a whole lot of elbow room or elbow grease for people dedicated to attacking this issue. I don't know how to put this lightly, but it's a large problem, especially in that area. It's a problem everywhere, but I've seen the impact in our area from living in the neighborhood, from working in the neighborhood, from taking my kids to the park, walking my dogs, things like that. We don't have a lot, but what we do have is a possibility to make a larger impact from Project Solution's side. I can get, I've been talking with the community members, talking with neighbors, talking with the churches, and trying to represent them as well as reaching out to the city. I don't believe the city should have to take on the responsibility all themselves. I think it's ridiculous. I think the community needs to get involved and step up. It's a responsibility as well. I'm here today to ask the city to join with us, help us in any way you can, to provide the materials we need, because, like I said, this is our last can, and they're not cheap. I believe we can make a larger impact directly in our area with the materials that you could provide, and I can guarantee you, I will do everything I can to provide the manpower in the neighborhood to do it, to where that resources can be off your budget list, or however that works. But I really wanted to address this, not as just a building manager for Project Solution, but as a neighbor, as a person that lives in the neighborhood, and something I see on a daily basis that drives me crazy. I don't want our community become desensitized to it because we're not doing anything about it. I've seen that happen in larger cities. Nobody even notices it anymore. I don't want that to happen to our town. I love it here. It's beautiful. There's mountains to look at, but there's distractions of graffiti everywhere. So I just wanted to be here and let you know my opinion, what I thought, what I see every day, and hopefully you can help us out in any way you can. Ms. Breckus has my contact information. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Mayor, if I can add real quick. Thank you for talking about the graffiti issue. I know it's, you're not alone in that. I don't know if you've contacted the West of Wells Group on the other side of the Wells area. They're big supporters, and they do a great job in dealing with graffiti. So I'd take a look at the website. The Wells Merchant Association, they tackle it as much, just as much. The East, the Wells Group, sounds like you're on the east part of it. They're not as strong at the moment, but it's, you sound, you seem like somebody that really want to grab a hold of that, so please contact those two organizations, and we're, as a city, tackling the issue consistently, so we'll be in contact. And, yeah. Councilwoman Shevy, just saying, we added someone else, the administrative person, full-time, as of the beginning of this month, to help with that. And so, just to let you know, so we're on it.
Thank you very much. Ted Lavatter.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Ted Lavatter, for the record. Two issues to address today. First, I'll take a moment to represent Project Solutions. It's come to our attention that we've been tentatively placed on the August 14th agenda. That timeframe will not work for us. Our executive director's out of the country until after the first week of August, plus we're in transition time from our summer programming into our after-school programming, so we would need a lot more time to prepare a presentation that would give you a full picture of what we do in the community and our financial status.
How much time do you need?
We would need until the first week of, the first meeting in October would be perfect for us.
First meeting in October?
Yeah, we're, sir.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, we're all volunteers, sir. None of us are getting paid, so...
Okay, all right. We'll take that into consideration.
And if we, it can't get pushed back to that date, we just might not be able to make it. So I'll move on to my next issue. I would like to thank Mr. Sam Denae, not only for his tireless efforts here at the City Council, but also for him bringing to my attention the issue of the changes to the open meeting law statement. His observations last week were quite astute. You know I've been a champion of the open meeting laws for more than a year now, and since that time, I think there's only been one agenda item that's related to the open meeting laws, and maybe somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but that one agenda item that was related to the open meeting laws never even got a hearing or a discussion. So today I'm here to ask my seven elected representatives to take the time to champion this issue for me, to not only look at the changes that have been made to the front of the agenda, but also to look at my continued complaints regarding how this body takes public comment on agenda items. Mr. Mayor, the changes that were made to the agendas were made without council approval and without any public input. You and I don't agree on a lot, but we certainly agree if we let lawyers run this thing, we're all in trouble. Thank you. Nice turtle. So, you know, I was very upset when this council voted to spend my tax dollars opposing the ward-only voting legislation, and after it was vetoed by the governor, I tried to look at the bright side, and what I realized is, now I have seven elected representatives that are obligated to me as a constituent as much as my ward representative is. So I am asking, through the chairperson, if anybody on this board would like to champion this issue for me and for the citizens of this community. I'm already working on a number of issues with Councilwoman Breckus, Councilwoman Shevy, and Mr. Mayor, you and I are going to be working on a, hopefully, very light issue soon, so that leaves three. Now, don't raise your hands all at once, but would somebody please ask for this to be on an agenda sooner rather than later? This board...
What are you asking for?
An agenda item regarding the open meeting laws, the changes that were made to the fronts of the agendas, and also my issue regarding how this body takes public comment on agenda items.
Ted, I'm happy to do that. I guess I'm a little confused as, what exactly are you looking for?
There's two issues with the open meeting laws that have not gotten an open dialogue. One is the changes that have been, there have been three sets of changes that have been made to the statement here at the front, and then also I've been asked...
Wasn't there changes in the state law that caused some of this?
Nobody here would know, because there was no public dialogue about the issue.
Well, you've been researching it. Why didn't you look up, see what passed in the last legislature?
Mr. Mayor, the open meeting laws are intended to protect people's rights to participate in local government.
I understand.
And this board has a stated goal of increasing that, so why would there changes be made without at least this board understanding why those changes were made? If there were changes in the state law, don't you, as our elected representatives, want to understand those?
All right. Anything else? Do you have a question? Of you, Ms. Shevy?
Is this something...
We can look at that when we get to agenda items and stuff.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
I'll watch from video. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Lorton.
City Council, for the record, my name's Eddie Lorton, Mr. Mayor. I ended up, last time, at the last meeting, I brought up what I thought was an important issue, and that's 33 fire hydrants offline. So I wondered if anything was done from the next meeting, and if public safety means a lot, and I know it does to all of you, so I was wondering if we could have an emergency appropriation of funds to get these 33 fire hydrants back online, because I ended up last year, or the year before, in Sparks. I ended up, we were woken up by some dogs barking across the street. There was a roof engulfed in flames. I ran over, woke the family up. We half put it out on the roof. It was a shake-type roof, you know, and so we half put it out, and then they had me, citizen of the year. I went in, it was just someone doing their duty, trying to help a family. So we went in, half had it put out before the fire station got there, and luckily, they had a working fire hydrant there, and that's what kept the whole place from burning down. I know it's a small percentage, and I don't want to minimize it, that we have 9,000 fire hydrants and 33 aren't working, so I just don't want to minimize public safety as to where, you know, if it's the one next-year house, it ain't that great, but if it's down the block, no one cares. So I want every citizen to be just as important as the other if we can look into an emergency appropriation of funds to get these things fixed. The chief said they had $75,000 on maintenance, so if it's 150 to fix these, all he needs another $75,000. We can get them working, and I think public safety is an important issue, so I wonder where we're going with this thing, or if we're going to do anything at all. I hope we're working on it, and we can do an emergency appropriation of funds and get them going, because when there's some like at Plaza and Virginia Street, which is right here, close next to big buildings, and it's been offline for two years, I hope we can get these things fixed and get them operational again for public safety. So did they give you that notice last time at the last meeting? I don't know if anybody could answer me.
I don't think we've gotten a report on it, but we will at the next meeting.
Okay.
I think the chief said he was going to bring a report back to us on that. He was going to put it together and bring it back to us, and...
Okay.
Because they don't, they weren't sure of the total cost. It was more than what you were just saying as far as cost to fix some of these, because the problem wasn't just the hydrant itself. So he was going to put that entire report together and better bring it back to us.
Okay. Thank you. And then another issue on that, because I've done business here at the city a while, just, you have too as well, but the thing is, if you're ever out of code, they shut you down, and that's another problem here, too, because they're out of code. In residential neighborhoods, you have to have fire hydrants within 400 feet of each other, and when we have broken-down hydrants, you're out of code, and I've had them try to shut businesses down before. I mean, they're on you like ugly on an ape when it comes to being out of code, so they need to be in code as well. So if we could please review it, I hope public safety, I know you all want us all to be safe, and like agenda item E3 today, instead of spending money on 244 computers that work fine, I hope we can appropriate that money to get these fire hydrants going, because I think we should do that for the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sam Denae.
Sam Denae, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, and first of all, I want to wish the entire City Council a pleasant vacation. When I first arrived on the scene, the vacations were only two weeks. Now it turns out it takes 30 days for the City Council to get over Sam Denae. By the way, as far as that public comment thing, and the gentleman was absolutely right, suddenly these unconstitutional items were placed unilaterally on the public comment directives of the agendas. Sam spoke against it briefly, because then I was shut down and accompanied by the chief of police, and then that gentleman there talked about it, and then earlier today, they were still wrong, and I have to credit the assistant city attorney over there, Ms. Chase. I told her about it, and between that meeting an hour ago and now, she's corrected it. So that's something, a feather in her hat. That's good, fast operation, but he was still correct. It was unilaterally, suddenly placed on here without any discussion as far as I ever knew. Anyway, you know, I'm going to have to break the news right now, folks. I do notice that the city attorney over there, the chief city attorney, is going to vacate and leave this plush job that he has and run for county commissioner in Area 2. Guess what? Sam was going to run for that position, so I, that's not so funny. Sam was going to run for that position, but guess what? Now Sam is going to have to run for Reno mayor. Yep, Sam's going to have to run for Reno mayor. He's not going to run for county commissioner. Wait a minute, you know what I'm going to do? Sam is a brilliant enough person with his erudite background and resume and sophistication. Sam's going to run for both positions, commissioner and mayor, and you know what? I think I'll throw in Congress all at once. I can handle all three of those jobs, I flat guarantee you, and I'm not taking anything away from the people already in those positions, but I can do as good as all three of them, and I know I can do better than that commissioner guy. Earlier today, I was at the meeting, going, thumbing through this, one of my favorite fiction novels, The State of the City Address. Beautiful little booklet here, put together by the City Hall. You know the thing about the State of the City Address they gave a little while ago? Everything that was good in it, Sam recommended or supported. Everything that was bad in the city report, Sam spoke against. Virtual everything. Specifically, I spoke against buying this building, but I won't go there anymore. If there's one thing that the citizens of Reno despise more than anything else, if there's one thing, and even I had some of the poobas come and talk to me later on after I mentioned it earlier, the citizens of Reno are just sick and tired of this. Musical chairs, musical chairs, regular old career politicians moving from one chair to another to another, if they're timed out, they move into another chair, they're timed out, and they move into another chair. It's happening everywhere, and the citizens are sick and tired of it, and they're sick and tired of the vote stealers putting those career politicians in one position after another, wrongfully.
Thank you very much. Mark Marquel.
Mark Marquel, concerned, read, hi, City Council members, and Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Mayor. Mark Marquel, concerned, being a resident. I, I, I'm not there, I'm kind of, I don't, I don't know whether this is politically correct or not, but I'm brain stupid, and I had a car lying on my head. I don't know if I should read for my notes. I did bring it today, but is it more effective to read for my notes?
It's more effective, Mark, because, as you've mentioned before, you bounce around, and it's more effective when you read from your notes about drunk drivers and things like that, and it's very effective, and we appreciate it.
I don't want people to get in a car drunk. If you're drunk, I don't want you to drive people around. It's stupid, and you can kill them, yourself, other people. It's not right, and your kids, it's dangerous thing, but next time I'll bring one. I didn't know. I thought people would listen. I'm not there.
Well, no, no, we appreciate it, and you bring your notes next time.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, sir.
It's a very good message you give us to, don't drive drunk, and don't get in a car with a drunk driver, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Having no other public comment cards, I'll close the public comment section. Go to item A5, City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one announcement to make. The City of Reno is partnering with the City of Sparks, Washoe County, the Western Regional Water Commission, the Reno Arts and Culture Commission, and has commissioned Bryce Chisholm, a local artist, to beautify the first downtown storm drain inlet. This is the beginning of a public service campaign that uses public art to fight pollution in conjunction with the Art Town Events. Residents are invited to join Bryce on, at 6:00 PM Friday, July 12th, on the Truckee River Walk near the Riverside Theater, and you can see up on the board some of the samples of the art that we're referring to.
All right, we're good.
6:00 PM on Friday.
The artist's name.
The artist is Bryce Chisholm.
Chisholm. That's good. That's very good. Okay. Anything else? All right. Now we'll go to item A6, Approval of the Agenda. Before we go to approval, we have item D2 has been pulled.
D1, yes, sir.
No, I said item D2 has been pulled. Economic Development Update. Item D...
D1.
On my agenda, it says D2.
Okay.
No, not on, huh? It is D1.
Yeah, I got it screwed up.
Oh, thanks for correcting me, guys.
We did that on Christmas Eve.
Yeah, I know you did. Everybody likes to trick me. All right, item D1 has been pulled. No, huh? Staff is requesting that item J8 be heard after the consent agenda, and also item J1 be heard after the consent agenda. Proclaimations, non-presentations today. Presentation by Kitsky Lane Safety Management Plan Draft Final Report. Public comments, 12 noon, we just did. Public hearings, item F1. Lease agreement between the City of Reno and Sierra RT Limited for the Center City North Building. There is no public hearing at 6 o'clock tonight. Any other changes you want to make of the agenda? Mr. George?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can we hear J5 and J7 after the consent agenda also?
Yes, J5 and J7 after the consent. Any others? Any other changes?
I'm just wondering if we have a number of people here for the presentation who are going to be sitting in the audience for quite a while.
No, D is next. What's next?
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry.
Okay?
All good.
All right, okay. Well, with those changes, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Who to approve?
Have motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes for June 19?
I'll make the motion, Mayor. I think these were continued, and I think they were corrected as submitted after the clerk's offices looked them over, so I'll make the motion.
Have a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash disbursements, any disqualifications or notices? Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Have motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Presentations, item D1 has been pulled. Item D2, Kitsky Lane Safety Management Plan.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager, members of the council, Tom Lightfoot with Nevada Department of Transportation will be presenting their findings from a safety management plan that they performed on Kitsky for the portion that NDOT owns and maintains. Tom?
Good afternoon, council members. Mr. Mayor. Did we have a PowerPoint there? Ah, very good, thank you. Okay. Gotcha, thank you. The project limits here, as you can see, start up at the Galetti on the north side and down to the southern limit at South Virginia. This project actually came into being with the, oh, yeah, kind of remember how Jim set this up. There's the Nevada Strategic, excuse me, Nevada Strategic Highway Safety Plan has five critical emphasis areas that are seat belts, impaired driving, lane departures, intersections, pedestrians. Two independent teams have looked at this whole valley. Both teams came up with the same idea that the best corridor to do this on would be Kitsky. That would be the intersection of pedestrian teams, both identified this independently. Excuse me. Let me go through Jim's notes here. It soon became apparent that there's a lot more going on than just the pedestrians and bicyclists having problems. The idea is to, oop, back up. I'm getting ahead of myself here. Just skipped a slide. All right, I'll go back, I'll just, why is this study needed? This is a diverse corridor, industrial, commercial, schools, residential, with a number of opportunities to enhance its safety. Significant number of injury crashes, substantial road use by pedestrians, bikes, and vehicles, and numerous driveways. This is a multimodal roadway that has many people on it. The idea here is to come up and make it a lot safer for everybody. Here are the pedestrian crashes. This is five years of data that we have here. You can see the fatalities are kind of a random whenever. This is only up through September 30th, 2011. From October 1st, 2011, through December 31st, 2012, bringing it up to our most recent crash data, there were five pedestrian crashes with one fatality added to this list here. Let's see here. This is bicycle crashes. We only had the one fatality back in 2011, same time periods, an additional year of data on there, with three more bicycle crashes. And here's an overall, this is, this is skipping several of my slides. I think Jim sent the wrong one here. Okay, we'll continue on with the crash data here. He's got crash severity. The severity of the crashes are actually pretty high for this section of roadway compared to other corridors within this whole valley. The idea here is to come up with better ideas for placing the bus stops, street lighting throughout the entire corridor. We have access management issues that need to be addressed, sight distance issues, bushes, buildings, stuff like that, that need to be addressed. Street infrastructure, that is in horrible need of repair. Bicycle operations is not contiguous, and pedestrian crossings and sidewalks, there's a lot of non-contiguous sidewalks in this whole corridor. Let's see what Jim's going next here. The time of day crashes are kind of spread out, as you can see. The fatalities in the red, you see, are very random events. There's no trends going on whatsoever. With the other crashes, or PDOs, and your injury crashes, there's like a time from 11:00 AM in the morning to 6:00 PM that is just constant. This shows that this is a pretty well-used corridor by everybody, and it needs to be Issues and concerns, here we go. We got the American Disabilities Act that says curb ramps at intersections of sidewalk conductivities, bike lanes and bike boxes. Bike boxes, I'll explain in a minute. Curb gutter sidewalks, right turns, raised medians, all of this stuff needs to be done for the infrastructure. Any locations, or like I said, bushes, building sight distance issues. Access management, locations where there are a significant number of crashes, injuries, shared approaches, which is another bad problem. Adequate corridor lighting, which I mentioned. Location, access for peds, bikes, bus shelters that are not blocking the sidewalks. Jim, Jim, Jim. Okay, here we go. This is northbound, north of Peckham, actually looks north of Second Street. Nevertheless, how do you get people through some of this stuff? Wrong one. The guy in the vehicle there that parked, I don't know if you can see it, if he opens up his door, the bicyclist has to swerve out. If he opens up his door on this side, pedestrian is going to get whacked on that side. This is just south of Plum on Kitsky. This is the kids coming from Worcester High School, crossing, not at the crossing, they're just crossing wherever. The guy on the moped actually had to stop for them crossing also. Here's some other kids taking their risks on the north side of Kitsky, crossing at We have some other issues here. Here's some of that non-contiguous sidewalk that I was talking about, unprotected utility poles, your bike lane is not really defined. It needs work. And back to this one here, this one, well, if you're in a wheelchair, what do you do? You have to go clear back to the corner, get back out in the roadway, and go up the road. Not a good situation. Not a good situation. Here's some of the crash reduction factors that we can use. If we have, we can get an 85% reduction for pedestrian connectivity. If there are missing chunks of sidewalk, if we can get those pedestrians off of the roadway and on a sidewalk, we can achieve an 85% reduction. These are national averages. 72% reduction for pedestrian activated flashers at pedestrian crossings where we can put those up. 36% for pedestrian refuge islands, which is a very good idea, also controls traffic and makes them go where they should go. 29% for pedestrian mid-block crossing, this is where we're going to have to define where we need to have these crossings at. 28% for installation of street lighting for any type of nighttime crashes, and there's a lot of non-contiguous lighting in this whole section. And here's the bicycle recommendations. Same situations, basically the same pictures as before, but you'll notice that the bicycle, like I talked about before, right up here, is going to get hit by the door or he's going to have to swerve out of the way and get hit by a car. Same thing here, there's no defined bike path. They either have to ride out in there or where cars have parked in here to visit the car dealership. Again, no defined bicycle path. This is what we call a buffered bike lane. In this, if we had on-street parking here, we'd have to remove that, put in this buffer, and it puts the bikes over here. Now, this gives a nice clear path for the bikes to move unimpeded. No bike, no cars blocking their sight distance. Gives also like this nice little buffer here, I mean, if there's any errant vehicles that swerve, they're not going to hit a bike when they swerve. They'll have a nice little area to recover. Something we'd like to try on this corridor. This is the bike box. This is something that is really new. We don't have any reduction factors for this yet. City of Oregon or State of Oregon and Washington have been using these. Essentially, a bike would come up and instead of just stopping here on the side and making a left, he would actually come up and stop in this box. Cars, vehicles would have to stop here. And when the signal goes, the bike makes his movement and the vehicles continue on from there. Something, like we said, we haven't tried it in state yet and we're looking for a perfect venue to put that in, but we don't know if this one's it. Crash reduction factors for the bicycles. We have some missing bike lanes that are, were painted and have gone to the wayside with the recent, you know, reconstruction of Moana. North and south on the west side of Moana Lane. If we can get that reinstated for bicycle and injury crashes, we can reduce that by 74%. That's going to require a right-of-way to get that done. The buffered bike lanes with prohibited on-street parking, reduction of 42%. And that's all crashes, not just bikes. For the bike boxes, like I said, we have no reduction factor for that yet because that is still a new concept that we're waiting to see play out. All right, moving on. Recommendations for, this is just the ADA stuff for your pedestrians, wheelchairs, that such. This is a very typical situation, very legacy throughout just about every city in the United States, but here in our own valley, that's 24 inches right there. Minimum is 36. So, we're in some major problems with this. That's all the way up and down the corridor. Here you can see pedestrians waiting for the bus, bus here will stand here. If you're in a wheelchair, you've got to try and fight your way through. Other pedestrians will just walk out in the roadway and go around. Not a good situation for that either. Need better bus shelters. Some more ADA issues here. This is right in front of a substation for the power company. They kind of made an attempt to let you get through here without running the fence across there. A pedestrian will make it, not very well, but they can make it. A blind person might have a little problem. More non-contiguous sidewalk, needs to be cleaned up. This is kind of odd, we don't know why this happened. If you're in a wheelchair, you think, well, you can come around to this side because that curb block is blocking that, but you can't get down to here either, so. Little issues like this need to be cleaned up the entire way. Now we're on to the roadway issues, just a lot of these too. If you look at this picture, what doesn't look right in that? It's kind of hard to tell, kind of lighting that on it, but this Mustang, what is he doing? He's completely in the other oncoming lanes, making a left turn to get coffee, donut, whatever. This is where we would want to put in some type of median island right here. That's huge reduction factor on that. Just putting up a little median island here, keep that movement happening. Okay, this is Plum at Virginia. These sweeping right turns are very old engineering ways of thought. They need to be updated. Basically, we'd like to take them out and it's going to change the whole makeup of this intersection. It's going to flow a lot better, we're going to get rid of a lot of conflict points here, 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 here. We'll just look at this one because our diagram depicts this a little bit better. See, if you're coming up here, you've got a sweeping right turn and you have no Excel lane, you get up here and you either have to prain your neck around or you have to stop, which then the guy behind you is going to probably hit you. Oop, back. This has been adopted by the RTC here and I think the City of Reno may be using it. This is the way the, a preferred right turn should be. You sweep up and you do have to stop and look, and it's not a huge angle. You've got a lot less angle to look around for the older people that can't wring their neck around. Much better design, a lot safer, give us back some right-of-way. And then we have two proposals for roundabouts. One at Kitsky, at Plum, and the others at Second Street. These were done by, I think the RTC's study, this one, PD? Okay. Yeah, I don't know, the outcome wasn't favorable at that point? Okay. Anyway, here's a really well-done roundabout by the RTC here in Reno. These are a good idea, huge reduction factors on these two. So, this is all stuff that we'd like to see come to pass with this safety management project. There's a lot of, lot of stuff going on that we would like to get done as soon as possible. Here's the reduction factors for a roundabout. Your on-street parking removal, your median islands, your sweeping right turns, taking those out, and your roadway lighting. Again, nighttime crashes only. Thank you. I will say that we do have a plan in place. We have Priority One stuff, which is going to be done within one to two years. That's going to be done at the maintenance level here at District. The next priority, mid-level, is going to be two to five years. That's going to be going on contracts with the RTC, maybe the City of Reno and NDOT. And then we have the long-range stuff, which would be like the roundabouts, and that's five to 15 years out. Got to have complete studies and all that stuff done. So with that, I think I have covered just about everything that we had here. Any questions?
Any questions this time? Yes, Mr. Dorch.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The on-street parking, taking away the on-street parking, when's that going to take place?
Pardon me?
On-street parking? When are you taking away the on-street parking?
That'll be done in phases, depending on if there's any right-of-way needed. With taking the on-street parking away, we can actually make the sidewalks, you know, wider, push them into the roadway instead of going out into the right-of-way, you know, on people's property, which means a lot less dollars, safer walkways. It's just a much better benefit. Like I said, we haven't really identified which areas first, but we'd like to phase that out as soon as possible, probably starting with the south end.
Are you going to be meeting with the businesses as that happens? I mean, evaluating the impacts that's going to have on the businesses in the corridor?
We have had two public information meetings. We have, how many hundreds of thousands of mailers did we send out, PD? Hundreds of thousands of mailers over, this is over two public information meetings, not just one. We've had very little people turn out. We've had up to maybe two or three dozen people and that was it. And we've blanketed a half a mile on each side of Kitsky going all the way up. So, we haven't heard too much against what we were proposing, so. At this point, that's why we're here, telling you what we have planned.
So there will be additional meetings with, as this, as this project moves forward?
As we move forward, yes, we'll have to definitely do that, but as it is now, we are definitely going to take part.
I mean, I definitely see the need to, for a lot of the improvements that you're talking about, but I think there's, I'm just concerned about the impact it's going to have on the businesses in that corridor.
We have looked at that. We have looked at that and there's plenty of parking off-street. We wouldn't propose this if we were going to take parking for, you know, and.
That's debatable, but I agree. That's debatable where there's enough parking off-street.
Well.
You talk to the business guys, there's not enough. So, we need to talk about it and we need to look at it some more.
Absolutely.
This is the first I've heard of this. This is, this is the first I've heard of it. I've bought several cars over on that street and nobody's ever mentioned this study being done or looked at. And so I would hope there's going to be some more input. Don't misunderstand me.
Mr. Mayor, we've gone through, almost will be coming up on two and a half years of studying this.
Well, this first I've heard of it and I would really like to know more about it.
Certainly.
And this does eliminate all on-street parking on Kitsky Lane in this corridor?
And within that corridor, correct.
Wow.
I have a question. I know you said you've sent out mailers and you've had some meetings with low turnout. Have you gone and reached out to the property management and owners of some of the, certainly the bigger properties to get their input?
If they were listed as the, as the owner in the books, we would have sent them a copy of that. Now, the manager may not, may not have heard from the owner of the property. That's something we cannot handle, but as far as maybe going out and targeting everybody, you know, just on foot?
Well, I'm not suggesting targeting everybody, but as the word will get out, I'm just wondering because a lot of us get a lot of mail that ends up right in the round file, so my concern is that those hundreds of thousands of mailers might not be getting to the correct people that may have many, many questions and concerns. So, I would like to see an effort, a personal phone call or an on-foot, at least, reach out to help to reach some of the, certainly the bigger properties, because word of mouth, the majority of those are, are car dealerships, so.
Right.
They can get with their representatives to vet some of the issues and bring that information back to you. So I guess Mr. Frediani was here earlier, I don't know if he, is he aware of?
I don't know.
He says he will now. I have a question. When you say Priority One, issues that will be accomplished, I believe you said within a year, year and a half?
Within one to two years, right.
That includes the crosswalks. Can you define for me what Priority One is?
Priority One, we have, there are, well, let me dig out the, all the paperwork here. What that is, is stuff like signage, stuff that can be restripped, easy things that don't have to be reconstructed, that our maintenance crews here in District can handle. Like I said, signs, striping, little things like that. That's what it would entail.
Okay, so, so crosswalks, new or additional crosswalks are not a Priority One?
No, no, we're not going to do additional crosswalks at this point with this Priority One. Priority Two, where we're going to add actual contracts, you know, where we put out all this stuff for bid, we're going to have pedestrian crossings we're going to evaluate at Coonsley, Lewis, Prosperity, Taylor slash Automotive, Apple, and Snowbird. We've had, we had some pedestrians, our citizens actually come to the meeting and actually specifically ask for crossings at some of these sites. So we need to evaluate them first before we just put them out there.
And, and that's probably two and a half years out for, for those?
Yeah, that's, that's just two to five years for Priority Two.
And will those crosswalks, because I do, I do see people darting across that street all the time and it makes me incredibly nervous.
Oh, boy.
And I'm not convinced that a standard crosswalk is going to resolve the safety issues, but I have seen, are they going to have the flashers where if people go up and press it and they have?
That's something will have to be determined at this point.
Those seem to be much more effective.
We don't want to just throw a bunch of flashers out there because then it's saturation and everybody just ignores them. We want to make them, if we're going to put them in, we want to make them so they're actually visible and they're going to be doing their job. So we have to study it a little bit more than just, you know, throwing stuff out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I want to thank you for coming here today, I appreciate it. The good work that y'all are doing, the study. Now, this is an NDOT road, correct?
This is, yes.
Okay, and I, it's been a while since I've looked at what roads in the city NDOT still manages. That's why you're here today rather than our city staff, and to see what the current funding priorities are, but where is this in terms of a priority of Reno urban roads to get done and then mixing in with all of the other state transportation funding priorities?
Well, I work in safety engineering at NDOT. Our job is actually, we don't have to just stay on state roads. I've worked with the City of Reno, City of Sparks, and all of Las Vegas to work on the high-crash location stuff, which is a highway safety improvement program. With that, the funding actually is all mostly federal. We always ask for a little bit of kick-in from the entities that we're helping. This roadway is on the relinquishment list to the City of Reno. It's been on there for quite some time. The idea is to actually be good stewards of the road, find the worst corridor in the valley and bring it up to date to current standards. Is that?
Well, we'll see about that, and I know that process is always a fluid one, but I think it's a very, for me, and part of my ward is in this, I see it as a very high priority. And I was aware of one of your open houses at Wooster High this spring and wanted to go and heard a little feedback and I, I appreciate the work that you're doing. In terms of the corridor, I think this investment is very key. It's a, it's a corridor from a land use perspective that has tremendous vacancy, business vacancy, and so it's hard to evaluate how much on-street parking is needed when you don't have a lot of businesses open and operational. And I think it's somewhat transitioning out as a lot of the car dealerships move south, trying to figure out what that corridor is, and I think this investment will be very key. And I look forward to seeing the ADA as the number one, you know, thing that gets done because we can't have folks in our community walking around in those kind of conditions and that safety. But for whatever it's worth, from my perspective, I think that roundabout would be a wonderful entry statement to our intersection, right, to our city. It's a gateway to our airport, it's somewhat the first thing people say, and I'll, I'll let you know that on the north, or excuse me, southwest corner, that building that's been barricaded and fenced off is, has a demo permit with the city right now.
Fantastic, very good.
So, so, you know, the sooner we can move along that to enhance, I think it'll have other side effects beyond safety. So, thank you very much for coming here today and we'll look forward to hearing more about this project.
Okay, one more.
Yeah, I guess my question is, how do or can we go about influencing the prioritization? While I agree that repainting and sprucing up some of the existing crosswalks is a priority, how do we move additional new ones up the, or can we?
We could. It hasn't been noted as a huge priority to push forward, but we can look at that.
So noted.
There's nothing, there's nothing saying that we can't. We can definitely push that forward and look at it if that is your desire. I mean, we can.
Yeah, it's definitely something that I hear out in the community, whether it be in midtown, whether it be on Kitsky, wherever it is, you know, safe and livable neighborhoods, we have made a priority and certainly crosswalks are a key component of that. So, however I or we can help facilitate prioritizing new crosswalks, I would certainly like to pursue that.
Be sure and get with John Finesberg, the director, and give him suggestions and ideas to work with you, and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out, Mr. Lightfoot has made a very good case for why the city has not been that interested in accepting this roadway up to this point. There are quite a few improvements that do need to be made.
Right, I understand. All right, now we go to item J1. Or, excuse me, let's do item J8 first. Huh? Oh, yes, yes. Let me get the consent agenda out of the way. Any items you want to poll for discussion?
I do want to quickly discuss two, maybe we could, you want, okay, okay.
What do you want?
Okay, I do have two items I'd like to pull off the consent agenda. I have questions for staff, those are E9 and EE14.
E9 and E14.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like J4.
What?
Oh, no, this is, never mind. Never mind.
Okay. Any other items for discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam E9.
Hey, staff, under your discussion, staff report, paragraph, had a discussion. Hey, staff, um, under your discussion, staff report, uh, paragraph, had a discussion, um, the second to last sentence, you say, "A portion of this project may require the consultant." And it's, it's a consultant is for, um, construction management services, not the contracting services. But to work 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Having just gone through the experience of night work at California Avenue and, and Liberty and hearing a lot of neighborhood, uh, uh, concerns about that activity, keeping people awake. I'm, I'm just wondering, um, is the construction going to go 24 hours on this? And, and do we anticipate disturbances? I guess this is North Virginia, you know, the kids in dorms or anything?
For the record, John Flans, for Director of Public Works. Because of the nature of this project and the, the, the size of the line and, and the work that's going to be occurring, when we're near Valley, uh, when we're, um, near Wells, there's a couple of locations where, where we will be in 24 operations.
Can we get a map of that like you did for the California Avenue Liberty area?
Certainly.
Because we will be hearing from people?
Yeah, we, we will put that together. We will have the locations and the durations and, and the schedules and make sure we, we public, get that out to the public and affect the individuals.
Okay, okay, because I do want to focus on our protocols for 24-hour operation and, and have an understanding of the land use around there. And then another question under the financial implications, we're saying that this, um, agreement amendment will be funded with 67% connection fee funds. Do we have, um, policies, financial policies related to the sewer fund, which, you know, what is eligible for connection? And what is eligible for, I think the other sources, um, ongoing user fees? Do we have those divorced out?
So, the two sources, connection fee and user fee, what we look at is in this particular project, it is a capacity project, meaning we are increasing our capacity. And that's where the percentage comes in, out of what that percentage is. It could be AD20, it could, it just depends on what that amount is, but that's how we come up with. So, obviously, we have a, a system that has a certain age and we're replacing that. That's where the user fee comes in. But when we add capacity like we're doing to this line, then that's where the connection portion comes in. And we look at those balances and come up with that ratio.
Okay, so go back and read the fund policies for the sewer or the policies for the, to track that down? Okay, and, and-
That and volumetric, I mean, we, we do an actual calculation as well.
Yeah, okay, and then pursuant to those policies. And then, um, the capacity, I know this is going all the way up to, um, North Virginia around like Lemon Drive area, are we going that far up?
Yeah, that work has been completed.
Oh, okay.
So, this is on the down, the down end. So, we could finish the project, which take, took it nearer to Evans. And this is, this picks it up at Evans and continues the project, uh, both, uh, east and south.
East and south, okay, okay, thank you.
Motion, fix it. Have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries in, E14.
Staff, I have a question about this one. This is a, um, an agreement to put in some of our money and I, um, 400,000 through the Parks Capital Maintenance CIP Program. Um, for improvements at a middle school up in, uh, the Stead area. And, um, the joint use facilities are open to the public under reciprocal use and maintenance agreement. I just want to confirm that the school district, they've really rethought their security policies on their fields. I received a word from a constituent today about a large fence at Reno High that's gone up. And I just want to make sure that, um, these agreements are still, um, consistent with allowing the public into these, even though the, the schools' individual sites might have all these new fencing and, and security provisions.
For the record, Jeff Mann, Parks Recreation and New Services. We confirmed with, uh, Wash County School District Planning Staff, that's putting up the fences, that we will still have public access to these tennis courts. And they provided us with a new gate, uh, for access specifically to these courts once they're redone, so that we will continue to have public access.
Okay, all like 24/7 and, or whatever?
During, during normal park hours.
Oh, okay, 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 thanks.
Motion for approval?
Motion.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries in, E14. Now, we'll go to item J8, chief.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. Steve Pitts, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department. Uh, wait just a couple of minutes. Um, I have a short PowerPoint presentation. At your direction last week, you asked me to prepare a brief presentation on staffing and workload, uh, currently at the Reno Police Department. I've done that and I, I appreciate the time today to present that. Just really kind of put the situation currently into perspective. And many of you went through this with us, as, as our fellow employees did, uh, really since '09. But the reductions in, in really staff, we took a, a close to an 11 million dollar hit in our budget. Uh, and that equates to about 90 sworn positions. Uh, we were closely to about 380, 383, uh, when we took that hit in '09. Um, and we're currently at 293. It also equates to about 58 civilian positions. It's about 55% that we're down, uh, from that same era. Our response times, uh, to priority one through three calls, we've seen a slight increase. And this council, uh, or the more senior council members will remember that, that basically we follow BJA statistics and, and we do a lot of work with, uh, the cops office and, and the Police Executive Research Forum in DC on keeping our numbers within certain spectrums. And, and, and the one, you know, priority calls from one to three, uh, we were at five, six and seven minutes. And so the slight increases we've seen are at six, seven and eight minutes, uh, for those, uh, priority one through three calls. What we're looking at is our UCA, our Unified Crime Reporting Numbers for really the end of 2012 as we go into 13. And some of you may have seen the article in the Gazette, I believe it was yesterday, talked about, obviously, our homicide rate is down about 50%, but we're seeing aggravated assaults and other things increasing. And so what you see with those numbers, ladies and gentlemen, is about a 7% increase in persons crimes and a 13% increase in property crimes that men and women are dealing with on the street and then the follow-up investigative aspects of what we do. Uh, in '09 and '10, uh, the direction of that council, uh, we reorganized the Reno Police Department. I cut the command staff completely in half. Uh, for those that are senior here, they'll remember that we had a chief and six command officers and now we have a chief and three. And the money was close to about 1.2 million, was pushed down into the organization, uh, in '9, '10, FY9 and '10, to save police officer positions and obviously civilian positions, uh, within the organization. When we did the reorganization, all right, is we saw that, obviously, we wanted to keep the patrol division strong. That's who you see out there every day in uniform, in the black and whites. And to keep those numbers up, is we had to meet these reductions in the gang unit. You see 10% in traffic, some 47, and detectives 32. At the budget hearing last year after the workshop, this council approved a 1.42 cent property tax increase to, to bring on 12 new police officers and get us basically to 300. And so currently, we're at 293. An environmental scan, kind of what we deal with, uh, in, in our industry here locally and a workload analysis, uh, what you see as a legitimate variable is the number of officers we have on the department today is almost exactly that to what we had in 1990, okay? Uh, the square mileage, uh, I'm not going to read it to you, but it's increased, it's almost doubled, uh, since that period, 1990. And the residents have increased by almost 100,000. Uh, calls for service that we handle, uh, where you actually have personnel. It's a police officer, it could be civilian staff, it could be a CSO. Uh, on scene in 1990, about 80,000 roughly. Uh, we used a different system to analyze those things in. It was called the PLIM system. It's not nearly as accurate as the TIBRON system we're using now. And right now, we're, the average is about 135. In 2011, we had about 153,000 calls for service, uh, that we handled, 10 and, and 2011. And you see that there's a little bit of a dip, uh, but it's still a high volume. It's, it's over 350, 360 calls for service a day. The Bureau of Justice Statistics Office, uh, has reported, and again, the senior council people, remember that for progressive police agencies in America, you want about 1.8 officers, 1.8 per 1,000 residents, okay? 1990, we were at about 2.3. Uh, today, we're at 1.3, uh, and we still service 4.3 visitors annually, okay? Full-time civilian personnel, 1990, roughly 100. We did have communications in. Uh, of course, that's in the IT department now and in 2012, there's about 48. Another, uh, variable, and I had mentioned it previously on the, uh, the first slide, is we had about 62 detectives, uh, working in the detective division in 1992. Uh, and we currently have about 49 detectives. As I had mentioned in the, in the first slide, we have cut those positions to ensure that our patrol division's strong. This is a study conducted by, uh, Mr. Beale from the Department of Justice, uh, issued through the Office of, uh, the Police Executive Research Forum in about 2002. And recently, we looked at this study again. There's chiefs looking at these things that we feel are much more paramount and probably more evident today than they were, let's say, some 10 years ago. And, um, the title of the survey was Tired Cops. I just want to share a couple of things with you here, because these are things that we analyze and track, but these are things we're going to start to experience as you have a workforce that's still maintaining a high level of service and commitment, okay? And, and, and basically running and gunning to get those things done in the community. Um, in law enforcement, service above self, much like, uh, public safety, the fire service, uh, that's what we believe in. That's what our people believe in. And so officers are going to try to do what's fundamentally right, all right? And they'll cut corners on the street to make sure things get done. Give you an example, could be a domestic call where usually we want two or three officers to assist. You're usually going to deal with at least two parties when you get there or more if it's a family situation. Officer gets unseen, uh, there may be a disturbance, there may be a loud argument. They're going to go intervene, all right? That's a responsibility that's expected of them, even though it would be preferable to have two or three officers there to assist them. This council has recognized several police officers in the last year for entering, burning residences and buildings and rescuing people. And the reflection of that is the close work we do with the fire department, where we're not firefighters. So, we're waiting for our brothers and sisters, because we happen to just show up a little bit before they do, all right? Um, and our guys and gals decide, we're going to go in, we're going to try to, we're going to try, uh, obviously affect a rescue. And they don't have the equipment and they do. So, those are the situations where you'll see at least officers, police officers on the street, and that's what we're talking about today. Trying to do what's fundamentally right and they'll cut corners. You'll see increases in sick time, personal time off and workers' comp. We track all of these. Um, I would have to say that workers' comp has not increased. Um, but the next thing that I'm going to talk about is officers volunteering for premier overtime assignments. Uh, I have the ability to force hire people and I do that and we have, uh, a huge event in town. Or if, uh, we have an emergency, obviously, the chief has the authority to, to force hire. And I can tell you that in the last couple of years, we've seen officers not volunteering for those assignments. And many of them are premium assignments where they can walk around, you know, meet people, uh, spend some time in a, in a great, uh, special event or another venue, uh, and, and they make a difference. Increased issues with, uh, sleeping patterns, uh, you know, we work 24/7. Uh, some days we'll deploy nine shifts, usually it's about six. Uh, and you have these young men and women working, uh, that early graveyard or that graveyard shift. Uh, they have young families and you see these impacts in their sleeping patterns, uh, fatigue and increases issues, obviously, in their personal relationships and the potential for some substance abuse. Impacts to risk management, of course, you know, Jack Campbell's our risk manager, but this is what Mr. Beale reported. Uh, like I said, we've been looking at again recently is this decision-making process. You know, people say, "Hey, Steve, you know, you know, being a copper farmer is a really dangerous job." And I go, "Well, you know it is." But, um, the thing that you don't understand, and I think I've shared this with the council before, are the hundreds of decisions, if not thousands, they'll make in a week. If we're going to 360 calls for service a day, you can do the math. And these young men and women, of course, you have supervision and you have command personnel and you have an executive staff, uh, you have a risk manager and Mr. Jack Campbell. We're not responding to all these calls for service. And so these young men and women make hundreds, if not thousands, of critical decisions every day. And with that, with that, you can see some increases in issues with your use of force, judgment calls, okay? On-duty driving incidents. And of course, the, the big thing we're worried about is obviously an injury to a civilian or a fatality or injury to a police officer. Want to talk about the survey. We, uh, completed our 2012 survey. Obviously, we do it in 13. Uh, the manager has seen this, uh, we have been working with OCE to get this out with our annual, annual report, very similar to what Andrew did today on the state of the city. But just to answer, just, the, the survey is comprehensive, but here's some areas I just wanted to share with you today. How would you rate the Reno Police Department's image, performance and crime fighting? And those are three separate questions. And in eight or nine out of 10 surveyed, said very high. Do you feel Reno is a safe place to live? High eights to nine, say it is. Does the RPD demonstrate the values, our values of respect, integrity, fairness and service? And it's in the high eights and nines, say absolutely. And that's just not the uniformed personnel. That's our, that's our, that's our safe people, that's our professional staff and our civilian staff. This is a big one, because this has been a discussion, uh, I won't get into my perspective on it unless we want to get into a conversation about it and I absolutely would love to, maybe not here, but somewhere else. Is downtown safer? When I took over, we started asking this question about downtown. We hadn't done it before, because I wanted to start working on certain initiatives to see if we could make a difference in the quarter by making adjustments in what the bike team did, rolling surge operations into place, which this council is familiar with those things and those tactics. And the survey this last year said, yes, it's up by 5%. Now, in 2011, when we did the survey, they said, "Well, you know, we feel comfortable during the day, the evening hours maybe at about 40, 45%." So, we're seeing something that is statistically different, uh, that's kind of positive for us downtown. And, and Andrew has directed me to specifically work with other department heads to, to get us out there really as an organization in these surge events and, and make a difference downtown. How happy are you with the results of your police report or follow-up? In, in, in any case, 60% are satisfied, 40 are dissatisfied. And when we take a look at that, what it, what that relates to, ladies and gentlemen, is detectives are down, you know, some 30-something percent. Traffic's down some 47%. And those are people that we rely on in investigative jobs to do the follow-up stuff. And so we need, obviously, to improve here, uh, and, and, you know, we can't put a lot of personnel on those positions. Uh, my recommendation today and probably for as long as I'm here over the next year would be that we continue to keep patrol very strong, because that's where we need to be. Top priorities for our community, used to be traffic and graffiti. We're not saying they're not, they are. But in this survey, it's gangs, narcotics enforcement and police presence in the neighborhoods. And the reason I put that in parentheses is because we talk a lot about, I mean, Mr. Delgado said it, uh, actually in the vignette today, in the status of the city, we talk a lot about downtown. And I'm, I'm a big advocate for pushing safety downtown. But we can't forget about our neighborhoods. We need law enforcement presence there. There were questions last week, uh, Steve, what about the reserve program that we had in 2009 that was, uh, basically dissolved, uh, because we laid off, um, you know, several police officers and roughly about some 60, uh, people total in the organization? There's just a couple of things I want you to consider. It was an excellent program, but we were at full staff, all right? They were considered what, and it's in, and it's in the language of the contract, walking ambassadors. The area that they worked was the downtown quarter, all right? Um, when this was negotiated with Mr. McNeely and, and, and your predecessors, uh, that basically you can build that staff up to about 15% of the sworn patrol officer staff. So, it's about 30, okay, uh, in today's numbers. Um, they cannot operate a marked policienet, all right? They're basically in walking status downtown. Uh, we do not want them responding to calls for service. And what they would do to kind of put it into context is they'd have beets, they walked in pairs. If they ran into a call for service, they would have to request a regular police officer who would show up and assist them. If it was either an intervention, an interaction, a citation or arrest, the regular police officer would have to accomplish that. And the language in the contract specifically says it can't be used to supplant regular police officers' duties. And I know supplanting is, uh, a pretty vague term, but, um, I think that's something we need to pay attention to. Recommendations based, based on this very short, uh, presentation, and hopefully I can answer any questions that you have, is, uh, we did fund those eight positions, uh, that we're asking for today for FY13, 14. Uh, and that academy, if you were to approve those positions today, starts Monday morning, the 15th. Uh, basically, we've got a half a week to get those kids in. And then I would recommend that we are allowed to investigate, develop and implement a volunteer uniform reserve program. And just so you know, when I talk to my training people, um, it would probably take about five to six months to develop that and make sure we selected the right people. Um, we would want, want to make sure they went through a program where they, they're doing the kind of police work we expect at the Reno Police Department and then we would deploy them as needed in the community to include downtown. And with that, I'll take any questions, Honorable Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Mr. George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I think this is on the agenda because we're concerned about where we're at in negotiations with RPPA. And I, I think I obviously expressed some concerns to the, the manager. But I, I, I do believe we need to hire those eight officers. I think we need to get that moving and get them in the academy. Um, where we're at staff-wise in the police department, uh, it's just not acceptable. I, I, I know we're dealing with budget issues and, and, and we're fighting through that. But, I mean, to be at 1990 levels in our police force is, is just not, it's not acceptable in my opinion. And I think, I think we've got to get them hired, we've got to get them in the academy and got to get them back out on the street. So, that's, that's my position.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't see up there, and maybe it was up there, um, how many officers will retire as well? So, I mean, so it's going to be even lower.
In 2009, '10?
Yeah.
Well, what we did, ma'am, uh, in council, Honorable Mayor, um, with the previous council and some of, some of you are familiar with this, is, is- of you are familiar with this, is we built kind of an attrition plan with the labor groups. So we knew, let's say roughly 50 to 70 potentially could retire over a year or two, and we worked very closely to get those numbers covered, so we didn't lay off 50 or 70. And we were blessed enough to attain that. We actually ended up, I think it was 13 or 14 police officers we laid off in early 2010, but we've returned all those positions back. And as you can see, we're still down at 293. If that answers your question.
And that is very concerning. So, I mean, I would highly recommend absolutely having them back.
Ms. Jordan.
I have a question of the eight officers that are getting ready to enter the academy. How long is the academy again?
Academy's roughly just under 20 weeks, ma'am, and then they enter a field training program that's about 16.
Okay, and those, once they have come out of the academy and done the field training, they would hit the streets, estimate of months, I mean...
In a solo assignment?
Yes.
Yeah, well, you'd probably be talking early 2014, January.
And they would all be patrol?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm absolutely supportive of bringing on these eight officers. I have some more questions on the reserve program, but maybe we need to take this one bite at a time, and maybe, what do you need from us? A motion to move forward with the academy?
The chief's not going to tell you that. Yes, I want a motion.
Well, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The academy, is that something that we hold ourselves, or do, and are they on our payroll once we open an academy? How does that work?
That's a very important question, Mrs. Bruckus. As you know better than I, we're always working on improving our culture, if it's in the city, if it's in the organization, or the Reno Police Department. So when you bring these kids, and that's what they are, into an academy setting, we have built a regional academy with the Sparks Police Department. The big three players are us, the sheriff, and Sparks PD. And we have other players that come in, but we control the curriculum, what's taught, the importance of community policing, problem solving, keeping safety high in the community, and obviously on the job. And so that's an important question, because we want to start encultivating those kids early. And Post has a great program in Carson, but it's not 20 weeks, and it doesn't cover the essential things that we want Reno police officers to be good at. And so we share those costs with the sheriff, and the Sparks Police Department, with our instructors and things like that. And it's really about starting that culture early, ma'am.
So they have an interlo, we have like an interlocal agreement with those departments. Are they starting up academies at this time, too?
They are. Actually, the sheriff has several young deputy recruits that will be going to this academy on Monday.
Is that standard practice across the country? I know, I've just been talking to fire folks, you know, because some of them have gone through, TMCC has their own program, so they go out and get their own, you know, education. Is it typical that jurisdictions hold their own academy, or is it moving more towards individuals come having gone through an academy somewhere else, and then come on through a probationary period through a force? What's the, like, the most current practice?
Well, I can kind of explain what we've discussed at the executive level here locally, and right now, we have what I've talked about. It's a regional academy where we hire these people, we do their backgrounds, we bring them into the academy setting. We've discussed with Truckee Meadows Community College, who's a partner of ours up there, maybe moving to this academic piece where the academy, a person kind of goes through the academy on their own. Then they apply for Reno PD, Washoe County, or Sparks PD, right? If they're accepted, then obviously, that's a cost that will incur, and we've been working with the sheriff and Sparks PD on that. And that is true, that's correct, that's a fire model. Here's one of the big problems, and it's not to say the fire service doesn't have background. The biggest struggle for us are the investigative backgrounds for these young police officers. So if they go through an academy, and then you decide to select them, and you get them into a background investigation, they get washed out. You will end up seeing a higher attrition of going through that list. And so right now, I think the system we have in place with the sheriff and Sparks is great, and Truckee Meadows College, but we are working towards maybe coming up with a model similar to that, ma'am.
Okay.
Chair has a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
Ma'am.
No. So do we have a foot patrol element to our forces right now, or have we ever in recent times?
I would say when we were larger, the patrol commander who would oversee patrol command could designate, I mean, you have a bike team. You could have the bike team rolling around on their mountain bikes, spending more time on foot, and building foot patrol maybe into certain geography, if it's a neighborhood, if it's a downtown quarter. As we've reduced the organization, I would say that the opportunity to do that with a smaller force is a little bit tougher. And I think I know where you're going. I'm a big believer in foot patrol. It's high visibility, you're interacting with the community, and those are the things we're trying to do, ma'am, with the surge operations right now in the downtown quarter, is increase visibility, more of approachability with our law enforcement personnel, and dealing with the enforcement things like prostitution, panhandling, and drinking in public that we think are really an eyesore downtown.
Yeah, I mean, I just, if we are, you know, obviously, if we're in a rebuilding mode, I'm trying to figure out if there's certain elements that were lost that are coming back. And I'd love to see the foot patrols. I'm on my bike all the time, and it's a fast, it's not the same experience for either the public or who they engage, so.
And the thing, I would like to say this, council, you know, in closing, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, is the previous council, the senior people in this council, and this council have been huge supporters of us, you've given us great ideas, and you're working with us on graffiti, which I'll cover here shortly. That's a big deal for us, believe it or not, even though we lost the program, we're rebuilding it. And so your suggestions, we absolutely will take those and try to implement them or analyze them, and take a look at them for implementation.
Mayor, I'm prepared for the vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
I want to make one statement, chief.
Sure.
I've had a lot of compliments on squad cars going through neighborhoods and things like that, driving especially over in some of our tough neighborhoods. People seeing at least a squad car going through the neighborhood, they feel a lot better about it. So thank you for doing that.
I'll make sure people get to know.
Mayor, if I, just I had, I reached out to Chief Pitts about two weeks ago to see if I could do a ride-along. I did a ride-along during, when I was a citizen, but just recently did one. As a council member, and they were very professional, great, it was a great opportunity to see them sit in the backseat as we went around throughout the community, the neighborhoods, and the way they interacted with the community. So just thank you to the, if you can pass it on to the officers, appreciate that.
You figured that out, he put you with the best. What do you expect, huh?
Well, Mr. Mayor, he said, Steve, I mean, can I ride with the guy that's hanging in it? Sure, you can ride with whoever you want.
Yeah.
But Chief Pitts, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, it's, as I'm out there in the community, it's good to hear from, directly from the officers, because as I'm talking to the residents, they want to know what's going on. And so nothing's better than being actually out there and seeing incidents happen in front of you, and how they interact with the community, and how that goes down. But I'm sure he gave me the best, but I'm sure everyone's pretty darn good, so.
Thank you, sir.
Can you just clarify? So these are eight positions that we should have regularly ongoing every year, correct?
Well, you know, that'll be a decision for Mr. Klinger and the council. I don't think I'm in the position to say that, hey, you need to be at 300 or 320. It'd be great to say that we want to regrow the department incrementally, maybe 10 to 15, as hopefully things improve over the next couple of years. You know, but, I mean, we had discussed it with the previous council, they were like, Steve, if you were at 1.8 right now, how many officers would you have? And I said roughly about 400. And I'm not going to stand here and ask for 400, because I'm not going to get it. But what I am going to ask for is a reasonable number of police officers to ensure that our community were responsive, all right? We're not just reactive, we're very responsive and proactive in the community, and we can do it safely.
I just think these levels are very concerning, and we need to make this a priority.
I think the 12 we gave you a couple of years ago, every year, the city managers should figure out how to get you 12 officers every year, but...
You'll work with him on that, for instance?
Well, I'll have a little session. Anyway, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Now we'll jump over to, what's your next one?
The J1. I appreciate you allowing me to just briefly go over the graffiti.
Wait, wait.
Yes, ma'am.
I had some questions about the reserve program. Can you?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you go back one slide?
Is that it, Mr. General?
No, you had a statistic. Okay, I'm not saying it right now, but, okay, how many reserve officers did you say you had when it was in its full glory?
Okay, when the Reno Police Department was at about 380, we had roughly 20 or 21 reserves, and that cost us about 560 a year then. So about $560,000.
And my understanding is they are all part-time?
They were part-time, yes, ma'am. They couldn't work more than 18 hours a week.
Okay, so there's no benefits involved?
No, ma'am.
No long-term benefits? And what is the average pay for a part-time reserve officer, and how many hours does that equate to?
Okay, I'm going back, and my mind's, I want to say we paid them about $23, $21, $23 an hour, something like that. I'll have to get that to you for sure.
They came out to about $30,000 a year if they worked for...
And that was for a part-time position?
Part-time position.
Okay, so 60-ish for...
But no benefits or anything else? And they just worked the downtown and walked around?
Okay. When you talked about the volunteer reserve officers, if I'm saying the right terminology, I guess my question is, what? We had some concerns with the save officers, that they couldn't perform certain functions because they weren't sworn officers, they couldn't enforce tickets, they couldn't mitigate issues, that, you know, they could just call for service, but they were a presence, and I get that.
Yes, ma'am.
What, how would volunteers be any different than the restrictions that the save officers had?
There are provisions in that language, thank you for asking that, that they can issue parking citations and other citations. So we would be able to, we'll work, obviously, with the RPPA as we build this reserve program and follow that language and make sure it's specific. For me personally, I don't want them just walking around. I want them doing police work.
That's what my line of questioning was, what can they do?
And working closely with our assets in law enforcement and public safety to get things done. And so what we will do with your direction is work with them using some of that language, ma'am. It's in the contract, you can all find it, I believe it's online in HR, and just talks about the conditions of their employment. And that's binding. And so what we'll do is work with them on that and kind of, and build the program, come back periodically, I can let you know where we're at.
You have people who have already expressed an interest in such a thing?
Again, you know, this is Steve's perspective. I mean, the old reserve program, we hired all former command officers from California, great people. But what we need to hire is retired Reno police officers and people that have served in this region, if it's the sheriff's department, Sparks PD, or DPS, that are interested in still providing some service at a volunteer level, they know our community, they're going to come in with a very, very small transition, and I think they'll be a lot better for us. These, the old reserve program, were good people, but they really saw things from really a command perspective, and I think we need more people thinking like street cops out there, ma'am.
Well, chief, thank you for this, and obviously, our men and women in blue are doing a lot more with less these days, and getting creative is key. So I appreciate you thinking out of the box a little bit, and I look forward to this volunteer program.
Thank you.
I have a motion, second on the floor. All in favor, say aye. You already voted on it once? I wanted to vote on it again, so I want to make sure it took. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And just a real quick update on the graffiti committee. We have been working very closely. Lynette, I want to thank you for, Lynette has really tried to coordinate, there's been a lot of interest in getting on this committee, probably a lot more than the SAD. The SAD is a great committee that you helped formulate with us. And so we're trying to coordinate to make sure we get the right people on the bus, so when we call the first meeting, we can start getting to work. We don't want to call a meeting and kind of slipshot, there's really no strategic view on what we need the committee to do. And so we're getting ready to call the first meeting. We're talking about it at the police department, we're obviously working with Lynette on the people that have communicated the information, and being interested in being on the committee. When you look at Reno Direct stats, since you approved, really, the second abatement officer, and now we've approved other people in the budget to help us with graffiti, since April, roughly 300, 295 to 300 calls for service through Reno Direct on graffiti abatement. We're down to about 250. And so those abatement personnel, Brian and Kim, are doing a wonderful job out there. I want to thank John Flensburg for his support at Public Works. Thanks, John, for keeping Brian with us. And we're continuing to build the operational piece of graffiti, and your support has been huge. I mean, to knock it down to 50 in a couple of months is a big deal, and I think the committee will be essential in helping, moving forward as we deal with the graffiti challenges in our community. So, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We had someone during public comment bring up the fact that she was in need of, and volunteers all over, and now that we're talking about this volunteer group and et cetera of supplies, can we get someone from staff here to comment on how the supplies work with regards to graffiti abatement? Because I know back in its heyday, weren't those just supplied to us? Didn't we have a private partnership?
I can comment, I know John might want to come up, but I mean, you're right, ma'am. What we did is we had, basically, it was budgeted, it was line item in our budget, and we got a lot of donations. Sherwin-Williams, I believe at the time, was giving us maybe six or seven colors that we used generally, universal colors. We've kind of moved away from that to a soda washing system. And so what we will need to do is to rebuild that budget, and there's other funds that I can use within my budget to do that, to get that started. But we build, you know, kind of the bucket brigade we had back in 2006, I think it was Hope that was here that had a little homemade bucket, and we actually had a bucket that had very similar to that, that had Reno Police Department code enforcement stuff on there. Alex was big, a big supporter, Alex Woodley, with us on that initiative, and I think we'll move in that direction again. I'll make sure we line item that, at least in the police budget, because it's not that much.
Yeah, because there is great, great interest in volunteering on graffiti abatement, and she said it perfectly, she said something about it's, you know, this is not just the city's problem, it's the community's problem, and the community needs to, or wants to certainly help in resolving it. So finding a way to give them the supplies they need to help us out is a priority.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Discussion potential direction to staff regarding the proposed revised First Amendment to the interlocal agreement on the Truckee River flood management, as it relates to the voting structure of the Board of Directors of the Truckee River Flood Management Authority.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Manager, Council. My name is Carrie Lonza, I'm a civil engineer in the Public Works Department. The item before you is for consideration of the voting structure towards the Truckee River Flood Management Authority. Since its inception in 2005, the Flood Management Authority has operated as a unanimous body. In 2012, Washoe County and the City of Sparks moved to make a change to that voting structure to allow for either a majority or supermajority voting structure. The City of Reno considered the amendments, but did not take action. Recently, the Flood Management Authority requested the matter be reconsidered. We bring to you the amendment approved by Sparks in Washoe County, but do also recommend your consideration of the simple majority items, where in a member agency might be present, and the item could still be passed. Staff recommends an additional provision to the majority structure to ensure at least one affirmative vote from each member agency. With this change, the amendment would then recirculate to the Flood Management Authority, Washoe County, and the City of Sparks for their approval. Thank you, I'll stay close for questions.
Yes.
Well, you know what, I'll defer to one of the other members who sits on the board, on the board, if they have any other points to make, because I'm not a member, but I had a question about that.
I think personally, I'm on that, and I think the changes they're proposing are going to make it a lot easier to make things happen, and we're not going to run into roadblocks, and I urge everybody to support these changes.
So, who, the proposal that we want is a simple majority, but it has to be at mem, at least one vote from each entity.
We would ask that, with, with the changes, the, um, issues that we see coming forward, we would ask that one entity be present and vote in the affirmative.
Each entity be present.
Each entity, yes.
Have at least one affirmative vote.
On, okay, I'm a little confused. I, I did read this, it's, it's rather complicated. You didn't give us the master agreement, you gave us a table showing how it's changed, which is okay, I would have asked for it if I felt I needed it. But can you show on this, um, table that you provided us where you're making that change? And, and I'm, you know, and then I understand, if we agree with you, then it has to float back to Sparks and Washoe County. Do we know how their bodies will feel about this? Did this come up when their bodies met?
They've already taken action.
But we want to make a change to what they did.
Huh?
She's saying we make a change to what they did.
Yeah, so when Washoe County did initiate the item, uh, they did not consult with us to, um, toward, towards the ratification of the agreement, and then that went directly to, um, the City of Sparks. This body then took, um, took up that auction, uh, excuse me, took up the action but then deferred it. So we're looking at items four A and four B, which are the major, those are simple majority structures. We're asking you to, um, take a look at that, in which case only four members of the six could be present.
Writing, change to what?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, um, my note that says, um, change to one affirmative vote from each entity. So these are the simple items, but you do see that they are, um, the amendment of budgets and also, um, the facilities plans. In which case, we're very concerned about, you know, holding, holding the line on our projects and making sure that those are funded.
Correct.
Without change by other member bodies.
Mr. DeGato.
Jenny, I'm sorry, unless you're, you're good?
Well, I'll, I'll, please ask your questions, Oscar.
As, as the other person on the flood management board, I, I appreciate you bringing this up, because I know, uh, this is an important issue for the, for the region, getting the flood project moving. Um, and it's great that you brought that up, because we need somebody there, uh, in case things don't get voted right, we need somebody from our, our city to be, make sure that it's, it's affirmative, but not always held up because of conflicts with the other jurisdictions. So I, I'm in support of this, uh, this amendment.
Well, I'll make the motion to go ahead and, um, approve staff's recommendation that it would be a simple majority with one affirmative vote from each entity being required.
I have a second. Second, got a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to item J seven. J seven.
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. Um, item J seven is the, uh, looking at the terms of our purchase and maintenance agreement with Secure Storage Technologies regarding our existing parking kiosk. We gave a, a notice of termination in March, um, for the system, and in that notice that we gave, we, we had several items that we listed. It had a hundred and twenty days, uh, they had a hundred and twenty days to correct those, uh, items that we had brought up, and we have our findings that we've included in our staff report, and we are just seeking direction from Council today.
You just need a motion on this item, correct? Um... I'm wanting to make sure I know that the deadline for corrections is Saturday at midnight, correct? Friday at midnight.
Friday, Friday at midnight.
Friday at midnight, and I have read through the, uh, staff report and the findings. I move to accept the staff findings, and unless City Manager receives new information, which shows substantial change to the findings, um, move to invoke the contract provisions and removal of the system, and move to terminate.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second? Any further discussion? Yes, sir? You want to speak on this one? Okay, I didn't get your card, come on up.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, just real quick, just to clarify the motion, because I want to make sure it's, it's clean here. It would be, the, the motion includes that the effective date would be midnight, July twelfth, two thousand and thirteen.
If you'd filled me one out, and I'd, if, if they've already got it, they'll give it to me.
Okay, thank you. And then I was wanting to speak on, are we going back to E three?
Uh, we will in a minute.
Thank you. Okay, on J seven, for the record, my name's Eddie Lorton, and, uh, I would also like to see if they could get a, because this first kiosk thing failed miserably, so I'm hoping maybe we could do a Citizens Advisory Committee to decide what the stakeholders, property owners, and citizens would like to have more people come downtown, now that we had a taste of this kiosk thing. I would hope they would maybe get this committee together to really make some decisions, now that we've did a trial run with it, how it affects people or maybe prevents people from coming downtown, because it was such a hassle, so. And then maybe in there, like I mentioned before, they might consider bringing the meters back, because it had fourteen extra people working, it was three hundred and thirty thousand a year in the positive, and it gave people jobs to write more tickets, so maybe if they'll consider the meters. But I think there should be a Citizen Advisory Committee to really think of all the pros and cons that the kiosk thing caused us before, take it out of the public's work stands for a while and let the stakeholders decide. So if you could consider that, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Having no other public comment, I have a motion on the floor, and I have a second.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Before the vote on the motion, could you for the record confirm that the first and the second agree with, uh, Mr. Klinger's addition to the motion, just for the record?
Yes.
Both of them do.
And it includes all staff's recommendations, right?
Right.
Under the possible motion sub, yeah.
All right, I have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I overlooked the public comment, I'm going to move back up. I know we've closed it, but item E three, and I'm going to give Mr. Lorton a chance to speak on item E three. No, it's just a public comment, we're not taking any action on it or anything.
Mr. Mayor, you can do it under public comment, if the body wants to reconsider the item, you're still within the agenda rights to do that, so you could reopen with them.
Well, we'll decide if we want to do it, but right now, I'm just moving it back to public comment and let them speak on it.
That's perfect, thank you.
So this has been approved already, then? E three, or no?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And that's my fault, sir, I overlooked it, they gave it to me, and it was under a stack of papers, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I hope maybe we could reconsider this, because once again, I hope public safety comes first, and it's not even a matter of digging for the money. Approving these two hundred and forty-four computers will give the fire department the funds to get these fire plugs in order, so they can have the tools they need to do their job if someone has a fire. So I, it's kind of weird in the middle of fire season how it's being ignored like this. I hope we can come up with the money, and there's the way, is by not approving E three, and it gives them more than enough money to fix these things, so. I hope public safety comes first, but we'll see if it's approved or disapproved. Sorry, I couldn't speak before it was approved, but I hope you could really consider this, because there's the funds right there, what's more important, public safety or two hundred and, how many, forty-four new computers? So, please consider it, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, now let's go to... Item F one. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
Okay. Any questions or any discussion? You want to give us a, a short staff report?
Lori Miles, Public Works. Um, before you today is a, um, approval of a lease agreement for the city center, North Building, um, with Sierra RT LTD. Luke Lord is present, if you guys have any questions for him?
Have a motion, have a second? Got a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
No.
Motion, vote for one. One, two, three, four, one. Item passed four to one.
Thank you.
All right, now... We are, item eight, there are no ordinances, item H one, resolution.
Resolution number seven eight eight six, resolution donating Reno Access Advisory Committee funds to Turtaine Outreach to defray expenses associated with its sponsorship of the United States Hand Cycling Federation Series at the Turtaine Competition to be held in Reno in July two thousand and thirteen in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt, and I just want to say, um, congratulations to the guys that took this over, we almost lost this event, and I think it's a good event for this community, and, and another group stepped up to come in and, and take it when the, the previous organizer determined he couldn't continue to operate this event, so...
Um, I, I have a question, I, I'd support this as well, that this five thousand dollars is, is not additional dollars, this is just a shift from the prior organizer to the new organizer, correct? No, 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 but what we had approved from a special events, okay, allocated from special events, I, this is not additional to what was previously allocated.
If I may, for the record, Cadence Smatievich, Assistant City Manager, Councilmember Jordan, these are additional funds, these are not, uh, the special events program funds, these are funds that are coming, um, from the Parks and Recreation Department through the Adaptive Recreation Program specifically to support the hand cycling component. So this is in addition to the, to the sponsorship that is through the special events program for the event as a whole, and this is, uh, specialized funding for this particular component.
Thank you for the clarification.
I have a motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye? Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Item aye, R one.
Bill number sixty-eight sixty-seven, and ordinance authorizing and amendment of ordinance number six zero zero six, as amended by ordinance number six one seven eight relating to the outstanding City of Reno, Nevada, senior lien, sales tax revenue refunding bonds, retract Reno Transportation Rail Access Corridor Project Series two thousand and eight A and City of Reno, Nevada subordinate lien, sales tax revenue refunding bonds, retract Reno Transportation Rail Access Corridor Project Series two thousand and eight B, providing other details in connection therewith, and providing for the effective date.
Staff report, Mr. Mayor, please.
Uh, good afternoon, Robert Chisel, Finance Director for the City of Reno. Uh, these, this is the ordinance to, uh, extend the letter of credit on our two thousand and eight A bonds, and extend the forbearance on the two thousand and eight B, uh, bonds for the, um, retract project. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Okay, so...
We've covered this, go ahead.
Okay, so the retract project was, um, completed, right?
Correct.
And what, what ha, it was, was the initial construction of the retract project, um, utilizing this bond instrument?
No, the original bonds had been refunded, uh, and these are the refunding of the, uh, the, the bonds that were originally issued and subsequent bonds.
Have these bonds been refunded after that?
Well, no, these are still outstanding, I, I mean, the two thousand and eight A and Bs were re, were refundings of prior bond issues.
That funded the initial construction, okay? And then what were the auction rate securities that then we went over to the Bank of New York and got out of a swap termination?
They were one of the bonds that were refunded as part of these, this series of bonds. The auction rate securities were also done with the two, uh, Downtown Event Center bonds, but they were done for these, and we were able to refinance them quicker than the, with the Downtown Event Center. We are in litigation with the Goldman Sachs in regards to this, uh, issue, but, um, that, that's a separate transaction.
Okay.
Litigation versus bond.
So these are the descendant, um, uh, debt that we have on the retract, which is not in any sort of, uh, litigation. It's, it's here, but we're asking to refund it because we haven't been able to pay...
No, we're, we're not asking to refund any of these bonds here, we're just asking to extend the letter of credit.
Okay.
The letter of credit on the two thousand and eight As just provides, it's, it's like an insurance policy.
Okay.
It's an insurance on the two thousand and eight As, and the, and the letter of credit comes up every couple of years. This is the document to extend the letter of credit on the two thousand and eight As. Now, the two thousand and eight Bs, which are also associated with them, we're extending the forbearance where we do not have to make any payments to Goldman Sachs for the next, actually, year and ten months, uh, or a year and nine months, I should say, um, because it would be through June, uh, two thousand and fifteen.
So this is really about the two thousand Bs?
We have the two thousand and eight As and the two thousand and eight Bs. The As are, have the letter of credit, the Bs are with Goldman Sachs.
Okay, and the As were, uh, were forbearance on the interest on those, and, but the interest is accruing, that's the Bs?
The Bs.
Okay, the Bs.
But we have, we are not making any payments.
On the Bs?
For the next, well, we haven't been for the last two years, and they're extending the forbearance for another two years.
So we're just stringing out the Bs?
Correct.
And what is the projected termination for the Bs at this point?
Uh, I believe it's twenty fifty-two? Yeah, maturity is two, twenty fifty-two, I believe.
When they were originally issued, what was our maturation date? Twenty fifty-two? Okay, we're not ex, extending the terms. What is it costing us to get this letter of credit?
Oh, the letter of credit? Um, the, the fees have remained the same.
Okay.
Uh, we, we are required to have the letter of credit.
Okay.
Letter of credit is required as part of the original bond ordinance and when we issued the bonds. And it, it varies, but I believe it's about nine hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay, and then my next question is, we're amending an ordinance here, right? Is this a new ordinance? I mean, why don't we just do a new ordinance? Is that, does our, I, I thought we amended ordinances when they were codified into RMC. I've never seen us really amend an ordinance that's already in place.
Kentor Follett from Sherman and Howard. Uh, this is a bond ordinance, um, it's not in code, and the bond ordinance by its provisions has certain restrictions on the amendment of it, and, you know, bondholders have an interest in the amendment of that document, that is the contract between the City of Reno and the bondholders about payment. So we are amending that contract that is the essence of the repayment of the bonds.
Okay, and, um, this is an introduction.
That's correct.
And we do a second reading within how many days?
Thirty-five days.
It'll be at the next meeting.
I mean, it has to be within thirty-five days pursuant to the charter, isn't that right?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, yes, that's accurate, and we're within the timeline, so those have already been looked at.
If we take this action today, and then, okay, okay. Those are all the questions I have, I, I think, um, I'll look at it in between the first introduction and second, because I, I, um...
Well, I think staff and bondholders have done a great job working with us, and, uh, we've done these things. I just wished all of us would have had a crystal ball, we could have seen what the economy is going to be. I know a lot of things, we look back and we think, whoa, we wouldn't have done that, but I think ever since I've been able to remember anything, I've looked back every time I do a bad thing and say, ooh, why didn't I learn? And sometimes going back and nitpicking doesn't get the job done. So now I have a, um, um, okay, I have a second? All in favor say aye? Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all very much for everything. All right, are now we into the Js again? J. Item J two. Discussion direction to staff, possible retirement. But upon, of the Charter Review Committee?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Klinger, for the record, Cadence Smatievich, Assistant City Manager. Uh, this item, uh, as you may recall from our post-legislative reports, uh, as a component of Assembly Bill Nine, uh, we now are required in our charter to have a permanent Charter Review Committee. Um, this committee that we are requesting direction from you today as to whether or not you, uh, wish to retire, was a committee that was created at the direction of this council, uh, back in February of two thousand and twelve. This is the committee, uh, that completed their work and made the recommendations that resulted in AB nine. Given that the legislative session has passed, that the bill passed, we don't anticipate that there would be an additional work for this committee to do. Uh, because it was created by an action of the council, we need an action of the council to retire it.
Okay, uh, Chair will entertain a motion to, um, retire this committee. Have a motion, have a second, all in favor say aye? Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Item J three, discussion, potential direct staff, uh, personally, I think staff should go to work on it, and, uh, then all of the committee members, uh, council members should make suggestions to you for a, um, who should be on that charter committee.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, for the record, Cadence Smatievich. Uh, this is a companion piece to the last agenda item. Um, I would, I would point out, uh, that the bill does require, specifies, uh, that each member of the council and the mayor appoint one designee each, and so we wish to, uh, get some feedback from you today as to if there is a specific process that you wish to have us follow, um, if you wish to have the clerk perhaps advertise for interested persons to submit applications, uh, and perhaps we do that by ward, um, and then those, uh, those applications could be submitted, uh, to each, uh, council member, uh, that, that the residents of the ward perhaps, uh, be, be submitted to each of you by ward, and then all of the applications, uh, could come to the mayor and, uh, to Councilmember Shevy as the at-large mayor for considerate, uh, excuse me, the at-large member, for consideration. Give you a little promotion there for a few minutes, uh, for consideration, or if, uh, if it is the desire of the council that, that you all individually want to undertake, uh, the process that works best for you, to engage with your constituents, uh, and simply bring back, that each of you would bring back names at a later time, uh, we just wish to get some direction from you on this.
I like the advertising and then by committee, and then... and then give it to each committee member and let them look at it and see who they want to appoint, or if they've got names they can bring forward.
Okay, thank you for that direction. Mr. Mayor, did you want to set a deadline by which the applicants need to apply? We're anticipating that we would, we would ideally like to, like to get this committee underway probably in the latter part of this year, knowing that they will need some time to kind of bring them up to speed on the charter and let them complete their work in advance of the deadline by which we would need to submit a bill draft request, which would be September of twenty fourteen, September first of twenty fourteen.
So if we did this, had this report back in September, October?
I, I think that would certainly be sufficient. You could even, we could even take it all the way, I think, into, to the end of October, so if you wanted to give them until October thirty-first.
The last meeting in October.
Sure.
Somebody give me a motion to that. Have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for that direction.
Thank you. Item J four one, intent, discussion, potential direction to staff regarding leasing of office space within City Hall located at East First Street. Yes, sir.
Steve Hardisty, City of Reno Public Works. Before you is a council intent to lease property in the one East One building, which is this one here. It's very similar to what we did in the past, getting your intent to, to do those leases as with the South Meadows property, which is what we did down south, and also what we just did with the City Center North Building. Getting the council's intent to lease these properties is the first step in actually running the public auction. And then we'll go to the two public auctions, if we don't have anybody, then we can go to a broker, or we can continue with our own. So this is just the first step of the process of trying to lease out the properties that are vacant here in this building.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Well, you know, this is the, these are our neighbors, right? And it's also under state law how we, we do this. If, if someone comes in and we say, ah, maybe they're not right what we thinking about as our neighbors on our building or someone, are we bound then to, you know, this bidder, lowest bidder, or second bidder, or do we have discretion among bidders, or?
I believe that there is the discretion amongst the council as to whether or not you're going to accept the lease or not, but, you know, it's just a process at the moment, so.
Okay.
So what kind of action you want on this? Motion to go ahead?
Yes, that'd be, that'd be terrific, yes, sir.
Okay, somebody give me a motion.
So wait, it's for this whole building?
Turn your mic on.
Is it, is it for, can, in this building? Where in this building?
Any floors, whatever we have.
Sorry.
Except the ground.
This is Lori Miles, she's the property program technician for the city.
Lori Miles, Public Works. It'd be for the vacant offices that we have on the tenant floors.
On all of them? How many do we have? Do you have it on your staff report? You want to put that up? Exhibit A.
I'm printing exhibit A, sorry.
That's all right, let's just move forward. And then, is it typical for office? What's a typical lease rate for office? I know retail and residential, but what's typical for office?
The highest appraised value came in, depending on where the location of the office is, is eighty-five to a dollar twenty-five.
Okay.
The rates you're going to see here are going to be different than you would out at Meadowwood or out at Miami and stuff like that, so.
Right.
It's based on the condition of the office.
Okay.
And how much work they have to do, or how much work we have to do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have a question. How, how long does this process take between now and when it, when it potentially gets turned over to our broker to market?
The next public auction, or the first public auction will be when we come back in August, and then we'll go, if we have no bidders, we'll go back to back, and we'll do a second public auction the next meeting, and then after two failed public auctions, then we can go to, to our broker.
Okay. Can you, can you on your next staff report come back and show us what the total vacancy is in this building? Because it's actually more than I thought. I mean, we know the top sixteenth floor is vacant, right? So that's sixty-six hundred, and we've got fifteen times sixteen, six hundred, I would imagine, but if you just let us know. How much of this building we're talking about leasing out?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, so a motion to tell staff to go ahead. Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Item J four two.
Resolution number seven eight eight seven, resolution of intent authorizing certain city-owned rail property identified as office space at City Hall, one East First Street, to be leased by public auction for a minimum monthly lease amount of point eighty-five cents per square foot to a dollar thirty per square foot in accordance with the provisions of NRS two six eight point oh five nine through two six eight point oh six two in Title Fifteen of the Reno Municipal Code.
Motion to adopt. Have a second? Second, all in favor say aye.
I have a little question. What is a resolution of intent? I haven't heard that term in many years.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. That's a statutory requirement for this particular law in two sixty-eight, so it's in the statute and that's why we utilize it. You're thinking about a land use resolution of intent, and that, that's a different type of matter.
Okay, so we do this resolution of intent, and then do we later on issue another resolution of some sort?
Well, what we do is, what, we schedule a hearing on it, and then the public comes to the hearing and they can actually bid on it. So there's a whole process outlined in state law, and we can provide all council a memo on that if you'd like, and then you can see the detailed process. We have gone back also in the legislature to try to streamline this process because obviously the amount of time you have leased space open, it's, it's funding, it's money that the, the city is losing. But we had some relief in the legislature before on square footage, so that helps the city. So we can do a memo to you detailing all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Now we'll jump down to item J six. You got a short report?
For the record, Mr. Mayor, John Flansford, Director of Public Works. In Midtown, the item before you today, previously we had come to council and there were actually some council donation funds that were provided to carry the Midtown Parking Pilot Program in through July fifteenth. Over the last fourteen weeks, we have had approximately around sixty-four, average sixty-four, sixty-five citations during a month. And so the cost of the system is about thirty-five hundred dollars, or less than thirty-five hundred dollars, and we're only taking in, even at the new price of twenty-five dollars per citation, it would be less than, than half of the overall money coming in, not counting the enforcement time. So we wanted to present that to you. The good news with that is that we are getting good parking turnover. Our latest statistics looking really good. The downside is we need to continue to enforce in some manner or another. So what we're asking today is whether we would continue with the program, and again, we need to identify funding for it, or the, one of the ideas that came out was actually, what about using a save officer or something, some, let's say a save officer to chalk tires? So again, you're not issuing the citations, but they could chalk tires and alert the community service officers when a citation was warranted. So those are kind of the options we're bringing forward to you today and the results of our, of our pilot program.
Question.
Yes.
What recent feedback have you gotten on the PUC system from particularly the businesses in the area? What's your feedback been?
Well, I mean, it's, it's really good. I mean, the, what we receive from the PUCs is actually the, the, the app that lets you know where parking's available. So it's a two-sided, it's not just the citation side, it's also knowing where parking's available. What we're also seeing is we have quite a lot of parking available, we're not seeing a lot of congestion down there. A little congestion between, you know, the lunch hour and then a little more congestion towards the, the evening, happy hour.
Okay.
Go ahead.
How, how are you doing with the hearing officer when citations are appealed, and how many, how many appeals are you getting?
I do not have the information.
And I don't have it readily available. I can find out for you though, Jenny. Sometimes it's good to follow through that loop and just make sure, you know, we're not getting too many appeals in overturn. So what, what is your recommendation?
Well, with lack of a funding source, I guess our recommendation is to.
How much is the funding?
The funding is thirty-four hundred and thirty-five dollars a month.
And we, we don't have save officers lined up to do this, has been something I've been talking about for months, about using save officers for this purpose, but we don't have them tuned up to, on July sixteenth to start doing this, correct?
We would, we would have to discuss with, with Chief Pitts and see the availability of the save officers to do that, but my understanding is that that's something we could incorporate. The frequency, the, the issue with the parking and going out and chalking tires is that you have to go out and do your, your initial run in the morning, and then it's pretty consistent every two hours to make sure you're, you're getting that.
Yeah.
It, it isn't as efficient.
Yeah, and this is obviously part of a much larger discussion, which we can't fully have right now until some things expire. But I would, certainly, I know we got some council funds effective July one, is to, for at least a month's period, I would certainly be willing to give some of my council funds to keep the PUC system in place in an interim basis.
I, I would give thirty-five, it's thirty-five hundred a month?
Yeah.
I would give thirty-five hundred a month, or thirty-five hundred out of my discretionary funds to keep this program going, because I think it's given us some good history and good stuff we need to, and I would hope that some of my other council members would join in with thirty-five hundred out of theirs.
I support that, I support that as well.
If we could, then maybe we, since we're going to be bringing back to you the overall parking program in August fourteenth, perhaps if we could get funding extended for two additional months for August and September, and take us to about the middle of September, then we could see where we want to go from there.
Well, you got two.
You got two.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Flansford, one last question. We have those, who are the ones who got laid off from the police department?
No.
Who were the revenue-producing employees who were, you know, taking care of this? Were they called CSO? I get all these.
Yeah, Community Service Officer, CSOs.
CSOs, and they were within the police budget, correct?
Correct.
And they have been laid off?
We, some.
So we had three and we just have one working right now, right?
No, we, we have three community service officers that are working on parking.
Okay, but they just do not have the capacity to come out and chalk if we went away from the Siemens, or?
They, currently, they, they do go out and do some, some enforcement in areas where they do chalk tires and come back and check on those, like in California or in Wells, but it's very sporadic.
Is there any way, after these two months run out, that we could bring one of those people on and just figure out that, that person will be bringing in revenue for the last, latter part of the year? And we know that.
When, when we come back on August fourteenth, we'll, we'll bring together a program and talk about how we might be able to incorporate that in, in the, the program in, in total.
Yeah, because I, I think it is part of this overall discussion we just had with the chief, you know, we cut, and what are the priorities, and, you know, how we rebuild to the degree that we are rebuilding.
Well, Jenny, and I, and I kind of agree with that, but I'd like to see what kind of traction we get with the volunteers before we start layering in a, you know, some additional paid positions. But, yeah, definitely supporting the, the project in Midtown and not negatively impacting the businesses, we've had enough of that. And getting them through until we come up with a comprehensive program is important.
Well, Midtown is really growing and doing things, and so I, we've got enough now out of the two of us to be able to continue it for two months, so is that all we needed? Okay.
Excuse me, sorry. What about having Siemens also come and do a, a presentation? Have you guys seen their presentation?
Yes.
You have? Okay, all right, never mind, as long as they've seen it. Okay.
All right. Let's now move to K one, report from Financial Advisory Board, any action, any appointments? Who's the, who's the? Okay, got a motion to reappoint? Do I have a second? I got a second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Item K one B, Historical Resource Committee.
Mr. Mayor, that's me, and I will move to reappoint Margaret Chaltko. She, she was just appointed about a few months ago and to fill, and now she's being reappointed for a full term.
Okay, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Access Advisory Board. Will postpone it till next one? Yeah. Item K one D, Downtown Police Special Assessment District Committee. Dean Henson, okay. Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Identification of Mayor and Council member meetings? Any agenda items for the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to get a report on where we are at with the Midtown plan.
Okay. All right, any others?
Mr. Mayor, I had asked that we put on for August fourteenth an update on the Waste Management franchise, and I think that didn't make it onto the three-month calendar, so I was just going to bring that up. And then that issue that Mr. Levatter brought up before about the, the checks at the special events, remember?
Bag checks?
Yeah, and, and, yes. And maybe that's not a topic for us, but maybe we could have it brought up and, and have the Special Events Subcommittee look into it and, and, or just a report of what our policies and procedures are at special events, and if some action or some reconsideration needs to be, maybe that Subcommittee could do it.
I think we already have something in our committee about security and stuff like that, that's covered by that, but we could bring it back and look at it.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, on the, the reason we didn't put the Waste Management item on the three-month calendar is I wanted to have a discussion with council if they wanted a full presentation to the entire body, because I know some of the council members have already heard it, or if it was just, if Councilwoman Breckus just wanted an individual briefing from the Waste Management folks, or if you'd rather have a.
With the volume of constituent inquiries that I am getting, which is probably higher than any other issue over the last six months on this contract, I absolutely want a presentation on it so that the public can see it.
Okay, because I haven't gotten any bad reports on the franchise, but we could have a report at the second meeting in August? Second one or first? I won't be at the first one.
If you would like to have it on the second.
The second meeting, if that's okay?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, to speak to Councilmember Breckus's question of regarding policies for special events, following the Reno River Festival when there was a circumstance related to bag checks, our special events staff and the City Attorney's Office, together with the police department, are reviewing our policies as it relates to the First Amendment. They're, they are doing that work, it is the busy special event season, not making excuses for them, but, but trying to manage that workload, and so they're, they're conducting that together, and I anticipate that if there are going to be any changes that come out of that process, they will be coming forward in the next month to six weeks. So we would be most pleased to bring back a report to either the full council or to the Council Special Events Subcommittee once that review is complete.
Okay, good.
Also, I would like to know who it is that I would work with in looking into Mr. Levatter's situation regarding public comment? Who, who would that be?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. As council knows, those changes came in effect as of July first. I know previously the council, just in discussion, indicated for us to wait to see if the Attorney General was going to put out some information, and we, but if you direct us, we would be happy to go ahead and prepare something for this council, but the changes came in very quickly, and so. But the changes came in very quickly and so there wasn't an opportunity to really do a presentation to council, so we'll be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
So if you can put one together for us, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other items? Yes?
I would, I would like to request the dedication of staff time to do an evaluation of fleet maintenance expenses versus outsourcing. I've heard some things, and again, I haven't been here long enough to have all those specifics, but having a report on just typical fleet maintenance, oil change type things that may be costing taxpayers fifty-six dollars per vehicle now, and if I ran down, if they took it down to Jiffy Lube, it would be twenty-three. So I, I would just like a report if there was some cost savings that we may get through outsourcing fleet maintenance.
Okay. Any others? Okay, now we'll go to any liaison reports. Ms. Breckus?
I don't have any.
Ms. Zedra's not here. Oscar Delgado. Mr. Deutsch left. Ms. Jordan? Ms. Sheevy? Reports on any conference or committee meetings? Discussion, potential direction, the city manager utilized two or more hours of time initiating of a zoning map amendment from MF fourteen to PF Public Facility for Reno Fire Station Number Eleven located on Mayberry Drive. Ms. Breckus?
Well, I'll discuss this one in the next item. If you have in your mind the intersection of Hunter Lake and Mayberry, just on the other side of Mayberry from Rayleigh's, on the south side of the road, there's a little parking lot there and then a barber shop and then our fire station. The barber shop there is zoned, I think neighborhood commercial, and he bought a property that's over, connected to his property on Hunter Lake, and he wants to expand his barber shop. And he went through the work of having the property rezoned and I think he even got a special use permit. And when he got into it in the design issue, he realized that the presence of the fire station next door, which is zoned multifamily rather than public facility, makes it in a residential zoning and he has to have some design distance of how he wants to do his property to that fire station and also to this power station. And, and the, kind of that, that's more the detail. The law, the, the broader idea is we have a lot of these older lots, I think we saw this up on Lakeside, where we have kind of old zoning that doesn't reflect the use and we haven't gone through there like we've gone through our corridors and centers to redo the zoning. And they, they periodically raise issues with properties adjacent who want to develop, and this is an instance. If we had, you know, when we go through and look at an area and see what's the appropriate zoning and rethink about it, we always rezone our fire station's public facility or Nevada Energy, you know, facility.
Do you want to do it citywide or you just want to take care of that?
Just these two properties.
Just those two properties, okay.
To allow this guy to expand his barber shop. So if we say yes, then this goes down to the planning commission and then comes back to us.
Well, because it's very important that we do what you're talking about because we got somebody who wants to expand their business and we need to do that, but I didn't want to get tangled up going citywide and I'm afraid that's what you were asking for.
Someday I want to, Mr. Mayor. I think we need to.
Someday we, someday we can, but I think we want to take care of the problem.
No, this is this for this gentleman and, and it'll come back to us after the planning commission. So I'll make that motion.
All right, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
And I'll make the same motion for this property. It's the NV Energy property.
Motion, do I have a second? Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Direction to staff to utilize two or more hours staff to address blighted properties in downtown. What I want to look at is the Kings Inn and these four or five motels up here that are boarded up and they're looking like hell downtown. And we've got a, is there a way we can get those people to tear them down or open them up? Or can we go out and raise the money, raise the property, clear them up and then turn around leaving the property? I'd like to know what our, what we can do, what our options are, because they're not doing it and it's a disgrace to our downtown, those closed, and they're also hurting, those properties are hurting another big major project that's been trying to get off, and that's Apple Computer. And so I think we need to get in and find, put some teeth in the program.
I agree.
Is there any way we could also look at that Ponderosa on Fourth? That's been, where they did the, I don't believe it was the Ponderosa Hotel or Motel or something. It's a motel at the corner right north of the Waste Management. It's where the Health Department, Reno Sparks, the whole nine went in there and looked at the hotel and they closed it down, but it's been boarded up and there's people there.
We could look at that property also.
It might not be the Ponderosa, but it's something else. Appreciate it, thanks.
But we'll look at it, not that, we won't call it a name.
Yeah.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, public comment. Any public comment cards? Having no public comments? My favorite motion. I love it. Motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, don't count. This meeting's adjourned.